Good evening. FRC Media is pleased to host tonight's forum featuring the candidates running for Fall River City Council. My name is Keith Tebow, Director of FRC Media, and I'll be serving as the moderator for tonight's event. This is the second of two city council forums tonight. The first forum was held earlier this evening, and you can watch that video on our website, frmedia.org, as well as on our YouTube and Facebook channels. All candidates were invited to participate, and the makeup of our two panels was determined by draw. The candidates with us for our second panel are, in alphabetical order, Joseph Camara, Michelle Dionne, Paul Hart, Louis Mellum, Christopher Peckham, and Andrew Reposo. Jonathan Lima, also a candidate in the race, did contact us today. He has a prior commitment and could not be with us this evening. Also joining us tonight is a panel of journalists who will be asking questions of the candidates. They are Michael Sylvia, an The Fall River reporter, Pamela Martin from FRGTV, and Dan Madeiras from The Herald News. Thank you for joining us tonight. The format of tonight's forum is as follows. The forum will last 90 minutes. There will be no opening statements, but each candidate will be granted a 90-second closing statement. Each candidate will answer every question posed by our panelists, and will have 90 seconds to do so. There will be no rebuttals. Prior to each question, we'll randomly draw a candidate's name, and that candidate will respond to the question first. Then we'll continue to draw names after each question, and a different candidate will answer the question first. If there are still names in the cup after we're done, we will draw another name, and that candidate will be the first individual to present his or her closing statement. All right, let's start with the questions tonight. We're going to start with Dan Madeiras from The Herald News, and his question will be answered by Michelle Dionne.
So, we often hear that with more housing supply, the cost of rent is expected to drop in Fall River. But what can the council do before then to help address the complaints of people who are struggling to afford housing right now?
So, first, I'd like to thank FRC Media, BCC, and the three of you for being here and providing this forum. Secondly, I'd like to explain why I giggled when he called my name. It seems I'm always first for the first question, but never first on the ballot. I can't figure that one out yet. But with that said, I don't know necessarily that that more housing stock is going to bring the prices down. Obviously, when people are paying exorbitant prices to purchase properties, the rents have to meet the cost of the mortgage. That's just basic economics. Council Kadeem recently introduced a resolution for developments moving forward with 10 units or more, that perhaps we could have 10, 15 to 20 percent be affordable housing, which would address part of the affordable housing issue. And certainly, on the waterfront, it would have a very large impact, I would imagine. As a council, we can only advocate for it, discuss it, push forward with that resolution, have discussions with the administration, and see, you know, if everybody is on the same page and willing to pursue that type of idea.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, FRC Media, Herald News, Fall River Government Television, and The Fall River Reporter. Dan, I think, I don't know if we have the answer, or if the council has that answer. I know that rent control's been brought up in the past. I also know that there is people saying that more market rate housing, or more housing, will bring down the rents. I'm not sure that's, I'm not convinced of that particular data either. I think what Michelle said is the right thing to do, is to work along with the administration. And we're going to discuss Council Kadeem's resolution at the October 28 meeting in finance, and I think, you know, we move on from there. But it's tough too, because when, I remember when the first, when this housing thing really came to surface, when folks were coming from out of town to purchase three tenant or six family homes, six tenant homes, the prices were exorbitant, you know, up to $1 million, maybe $700,000 from where the owner bought it for $200,000. And now these people come in, and they'll charge, like they charge my children's mom. She was paying $650,000. They came in, bought the house, charged her $1,600,000. So it's, that's ridiculous, but I don't know if there's something the council can do for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mellum.
Well, I want to thank the media for inviting me and giving me this opportunity to talk to the people of Fall River. As far as rents are concerned, yes, the rents in Fall River are high, but they are still the lowest in southeast Massachusetts. I'll advantage to say that the lowest of all major cities in Massachusetts at this point. There may be one exception up north. Can the city council do something about it? I don't think so. Who's going to do something about it because we need it? I think the marketplace itself will do it. As interest rates start to come down nationally, as they have, and they will continue to do so, mortgages will be less, and therefore rents will be cheaper. That's one way. And the other way is to build more, but make sure that a percentage of those new buildings are controlled, in the sense that some of them, at least a percentage of them, would be controlled. Therefore, we just have to go with the situation as it is right now. We have no control of the national economics, in a sense, but the news are good, that we're starting to see interest rates come down, and that will take care of rents, as it did in the 1980s, as a matter of fact.
Thank you. Mr. Peckham.
I'd like to also thank FRC Media and the panelists for having us here tonight. As far as the city council doing anything specific to tackle this problem, it is a very good question. I've heard it quite a few times throughout my candidacy. I think the problem with the city of Fall River is the tax rates directly affect what the homeowners are charging for rents, okay? Just since, I think it was 2017, we've added 3,863 affordable housing units. And with the median home price at $444,000 in Fall River, and the average rent at $21,000, you have to make, I think the national standard is $84,000 a year, just to afford that rent. I think maybe something that could be looked at is when we're discussing these market rate projects, is to somehow incorporate an agreement when a proprietor comes in to build a market rate housing, that it would also include a percentage of affordable housing. I think where we're lacking in the city of Fall River is the affordable housing aspect. We're filling every street corner in Fall River with market rate housing. A lot of that has to do with the MBTA Act, 6,652 new multi-family units within the city of Fall River. That's going to increase our population by 40 percent, mostly renters. And when we have to provide essential necessities to the city, we're going to have to go to the tax base, and the tax base is going to have to keep the rents the same to be able to afford their taxes. So I think we have to attack the affordable housing aspect of it.
Thank you. Mr. Reposo.
Thank you, and good evening to all. Thank you for having me here today. I think on a broader sense than the national problem, it's a little complicated issue to deal with, but I think on the local level, we can offer some solutions. I think one of the first things, and I'll echo Mr. Peckham's statement, some tax relief for the residents, I think, is a big thing. It's something we can have control of. I know as a council, we look to provide some tax reliefs to veterans and to seniors, which I think helps that. And I agree with Mr. Peckham as well, that that does have a direct correlation to rents. One thing I will say, and something that myself and Council LaPonte supported, was looking at the What's Up Height situation. And I think that's something as a council, we need to continue to advocate for, and get that pushed along, because it's a golden opportunity in our city, that could be redeveloped, and get people some housing that they need. So that's hugely important. But thirdly, I think it's important to have some balance of neighborhoods, also balancing what we need as a community. Working together with people is critical, and working with the administration to explore other options. One of the fabulous options that we have here is the First Home Time Buyer Credit. That's something that we should educate our population more about, and get them out there to have that ability to either rent or purchase a home.
Thank you. Mr. Camara.
So, last year, the state passed a law called ADU. You can build another piece of property on your property for an elderly, for relatives that has somewhere to go. This way, it's a lot less expensive. The city council can help residents of Fall River educate them. If your property is big enough to put additional piece of property on there, it's a new law that people don't know much about. A lot of people are starting to look into it now, but it's a way of getting your relatives, if they're elderly parents, or a sibling or child that wants to have their own place but can't afford a house, and there's no land available to build a house, they can build right on your same piece of property. And yet, it's perfectly new legal law that will help accommodate the housing crisis. The state did it because there is a housing crisis throughout the state. And nothing the state, I think, needs to do, not just the city of Fall River, but they need to lift some of the restrictions on some of these towns near us that have large restrictions, you know, 12 acres of land, 10 acres of land, on one house, on 10 acres of land. In Fall River years ago, we were giving out variances on 5,000 square feet to put a house on, subdivide the property to build additional house. So more, there's a lot of potential out there if the state wants to get on board, and our neighboring state of Rhode Island. Little Compton's a beautiful place. You drive by Little Compton, you have a nice house, and you see all that green grass. In Fall River, that would have been sub-development after sub-development to get more houses in there, make it more affordable for everybody else. So people have to step up. We have over 30 percent of our homes here are affordable. And we do a great job. We're trying to do as much as we can to help people stay in their homes.
Thank you. Pam Martin from FRGTV has our next question, and it will be answered first by Christopher Peckham.
Okay. Safe injection sites, or overdose prevention centers, are a controversial proposal for some cities across the Commonwealth. The plan is that people register at these centers to use illegal drugs under medical supervision and with mental health counselors there. Boston city counselors and at the state level, members of the House and Senate, they're about equally split in legalizing safe injection sites. So do these safe injection sites have a place in our city?
No. I'm a strong believer in the taking care of the mental health first, not providing the substance that they're addicted to to take care of their mental health issues. So people self-medicate with these narcotics, and the only way to get them off of them is to give them mental health help. By us providing the substance to these people and keeping them on it just under supervision, doesn't make sense to me. If we could tackle the root cause of the issue, which is the mental health problem, I'd be all for that. Let's put money into the mental health aspect of this. Not to have somebody show up every morning like they're getting their methadone to go and shoot heroin. To me, that does not make any sense. Yeah, no, I'm a strong no on that.
Thank you. Mr. Reposo.
I would say no as well. I think there are other aspects that we can address before we get to that point. And again, I think in Fall River, we've done a great job working with individuals to help get the needs met, as far as medical, mental health, what it have be. I think it's a multifaceted issue that doesn't have a simple answer, I think, but again, we have so many resources in Fall River, in the state of Massachusetts, to help people get the medical care they need. But I think just strictly saying "safe injection sites" is not the way to go.
Thank you. Mr. Camara.
Yeah, I am not in favor of that as well. I mean, there's so many things that we do do. Council's right. To help people get off drug addiction, to help people with mental health issues, we go above and beyond most communities. If you can recall, a few years back, someone from the Cape was saying, "Well, just send them to Fall River. They have enough facilities and clinics there to take care of the needs here." And people were coming from all over to get the help they were getting here, but that particular safe injections, I'm not for at all. I disagree. I wouldn't want it to come to our city. We go above and beyond what most communities do to help those people.
Thank you. Ms. Dionne.
I would agree that, no. I don't believe we should have it. I look at the safe injection sites, very similar to methadone clinics, which we've had for years and years. The methadone clinics have not stopped addiction. Very often, people who are addicted will go to the methadone clinics, and also, there's still, the same behaviors are going on outside the methadone clinic. To me, it just, it doesn't help the situation. I think it actually adds to the situation. And at the same time, we have STAR, who is giving people 10 to 20 clean needles at a time that they're able to take. So they've got the means outside of the safe injection site, or the methadone clinic, as well as going there. And I think it's just, it just doesn't, it doesn't solve the problem. The problem is trying to get someone who's addicted to the point where they can get over their addiction. I know it's not an easy thing, and that individual has to hit a certain point in life. Anybody who's ever changed, something had to happen, an incident, they had to hit bottom, whatever the case may be, there's something that triggers that. I need to save myself. I need to go for help. So unless they're ready to go for help, the habits aren't going to change, and I don't think the injection sites are the answer.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Pam, for the question, but absolutely not. I think, like, I agree with most of the whole panel here. I mean, we've, Fall River provides plenty of resources for folks that have been, you know, hit with addiction. And I think we should continue doing what we're doing on that level, but to bring in more of that particular resource, I'm not in favor of.
Thank you. Mr. Mellum.
Well, the answer is absolutely not. We need to help people get off it, not continue. And whether it's methadone or clean needles, it's all the same. It maybe derives from artificial intelligence, because intelligent people don't want that. We have methadone clinics. Yeah, there's exceptions, but very, very small. Not worth it. We need to help these people, especially mentally, not provide utensils or drugs, in some cases, so that they can be better. That's dreaming. That's not reality, my friends. That does not work, and I'm absolutely opposed to it.
Thank you. Michael Sylvia, a Fall River reporter, is next with our next question, and it'll be directed to Joe Camara.
How does Fall River balance the need to help the homeless population, but also address the concerns of the families who live near the encampments?
So, up until recently, our hands were pretty much tied. If we were going to take people out of encampments, we had to house them. We had to set them up in a place where they could go and pay for it. Since then, when the laws changed, we were able to go in there and clean up the encampments, and make those people move out, and stop doing what they're doing. Give them, help them, offer them treatment, give them help. We're trying to do everything we can to get those people away from residents, and there's quite a few residents, especially down in Lower Kennedy Park area, that have put up an awful lot lately. And we're trying to stop that as best we can, but it's very, very difficult, because they're used to being there, they tend to go back. We'll get them out of there for a while, clean it up, and move somewhere else, and then we try to go to that neighborhood and move them out of there. So eventually, the issue is, how do we stop the homeless population, period? And that's something that's going to be very difficult to do. It's been going on for a long, long time. Just got to get them the treatment that they need, give them the services that get them off of whatever it is that they're on, because many of those people are addicted to certain things that they just can't get away from, and it's not good. So we try to work with the residents, we try to have police enforcement there, we try to clean up those encampments, move them out of the residential neighborhoods, and try to get them in other places, and help them as best possible. So, but up until recently, our hands were pretty much tied, and lately, we've done a much better job than ever before.
Thank you. Ms. Dionne.
This homeless situation has grown and grown exponentially. No matter what the services are that we offer, no matter how much help we offer, it just, the problem just continued to grow. And it becomes, to me, especially for the neighbors, a quality of life issue as well. So you have people that are in close proximity to the homeless camps. There's a gentleman on Bay Street who has had propane tanks stolen out of his garage. He has had laundry stolen off of his clothesline. He had the back window of his truck broken by a particular individual, who ultimately was arrested and did go to court. People shouldn't have to deal with that. So there has to be fairness on both sides. You're not going to, you're not condemning the homeless person, however, there has to be, there has to be a line where you say, "No, you can't," because now, you know, you're breaking the law. You can't do that. You can't take quality of life away from somebody else, because you're in a bad situation. There are legal issues. And yes, a lot of them have been taken out, a lot of them have finally accepted help, which is a great thing. They have gone into some of these encampments, most recently, and said, "Listen, we're coming in, we're going to clean it up. This is the day we're coming. This is the day you decide, do you want help, or do you not?"
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hart.
Thank you for the question, Mike. I agree with Michelle, Councilor Dionne. I think, you know, there's, there are times too, when I'm the most empathetic person that you can find. I really am. But there comes a time when there's got to be, something needs to be done. I've been to those particular encampments throughout the city, and I can tell you, the, it is, it is not just, they don't belong there, first of all, but it's also a health hazard. They're creating big problems, other than just a mess throughout the encampment. It's a health issue. So they need to be taken out of there. The FAST team, yeah, FAST team has done a very good job, and I want them to continue what they're doing. But, and I'm not saying the FAST team does this, but other people, I think, are enablers to it, and we got to stop doing that. We have to take care of them, and we have to get them to a place where they can get help. Whether they want to or not, they can't stay in that particular area. It just is not good for them, especially not good for the residents, the taxpayers in the neighborhoods. So I think there needs to be something done, you know, not quickly, but we've got to, we've got to start doing something as far as, we're getting, we're clearing some places out, but we're not doing, we're not doing a good job on it as far as getting them out of there completely.
Thank you. Mr. Mellum.
It is indeed a major problem for Fall River, but not just Fall River. It's a state issue, more so than it's a Fall River issue, and it's becoming an international issue. And I believe that most of it, not all of it, but most of it, is caused by the previous question that we discussed, the clean needles, the methadones, and the marijuana's. That's the beginning of everything, of bad things. The city has done quite a bit, but it's difficult. Sometimes you take them out of city property, and they go into state property, and then there's nothing you can do. The state has to do it, and the state hasn't done it. In Fall River and in other places, it's a terrible situation. I've had, for example, 50 yards from my house, someone set a tent there, and I went to the police station, and the police says, "Well, it's not your property. There's nothing we can do." That's just the way it is. The state has to get more involved and help cities and towns deal with it, particularly cities like Fall River, because we don't have the resources to do it. We really don't. I mean, we can go in there with a couple of police cars and move them out of there today, and they're back there tomorrow. I live near Brayton Avenue, and Brayton Avenue is a good example of the situation. They move them out one day, two days later, they're there, and they're stealing from your yard, they're looking into your cars, they're trying to open doors. It's not a good situation. And we, as elected officials, if we do get elected, need to work and force the state to do more about it, because they haven't done a thing about it.
Thank you. Mr. Peckham.
So, this is a personal issue to me. I live on Beacon Street. That tent city is not right across the street from my house, but it's right there at the intersection of Bay and Middle. I've spoken to the gentleman that has a sign on his fence many a times. There's another gentleman just to the north of him, had to put bars on his windows because of this tent encampment. My idea for this is, I agree with Mr. Mellum, we need state help. The state in itself needs to address the entire Commonwealth, but I think we should lean on our state representatives, Viola and Sylvia, and bring them to the table, and address the, again, like I mentioned earlier, the mental health aspect of this. So to get them to care about the neighbors, I believe you would start with the homeless by, I brought up the idea of Section 35. And I know there's a lot of red tape to Section 35, and the FAST team tries to Section 35, but the bleeding heart judges don't agree with it, and they kick them back to the tent city, and then it becomes a neighbor's problem again. I think we should lean on the state representatives to push for the MGL, to kind of move in the Section 35 scene, to where if they're out in 95-degree weather to 100-degree weather, they're in danger to themselves, should be a Section 35. If they're out in the middle of the winter, and it's below zero, and they're freezing, Section 35. There has to be more room within the Section 35 law for the FAST team, the police department, whoever, the fire department adopted to use, to get these people off the street, because otherwise, they're not going to, and they're going to end up in some need.
Thank you. Mr. Reposo.
The question looks to balance, you know, homeowners, residents, and the homeless. So one thing, when we talk about the residents, public safety and the investment in public safety is huge. Right now, we need more resources to combat the issues that we have, not just with homelessness, but in general, with crime in the city. On the homelessness issue, a multifaceted issue, and it goes back to the previous question about mental health. I've met, I've gone into camps myself, I've talked to some people, there's a mix. I think it comes with a negative connotation, that it's just simply drug addiction, or alcohol addiction, or other things. There are so many multifaceted issues, and that's why the FAST team has done a great job working with these individuals, getting to them, and getting what they need and support they need. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we as legislators have to balance the ordinances that we have, and we have to work with the administration to make sure that we are protecting not only the people who live in our city, own and do everything in our city, but also those who need help. And that's, it's a core balance that we need to continue to work on, work with the administration, and meet people where they're at. And we have to always remember, all of these people we're talking about are humans. There are human elements we have to consider, and do the best for everyone involved. Partnerships is key.
Thank you. Back to Dan Madeiras now for our next question, and it will be directed to Andrew Reposo.
So, what role should the council have? What role can the council have in guiding development of the Route 79 area? And what do you think that area should look like?
So I think, again, our biggest role as legislators is to advocate for people. That's the biggest thing. And I think, and even the previous forum, they talked about how it is a major opportunity for Fall River, and it's a section of the city that can be, continue to be revitalized and help us overall. So biggest thing for us is advocate. We need to be involved in the conversation, but remember, we're elected to be the voices of the people who live here. And I think we need to start talking to more people. What do people want to see? We have a master plan, it's a very good plan. If you haven't had the opportunity to review it, I would encourage you to do that. But again, we have to be the voice of the people, and we have to get all the opinions involved and bring those to the table, because again, when we, as legislators, elected officials, we have that ability to speak out for the people. At the end of the day, I think a mixed property there, all housing, I don't think so. Small businesses is huge. Small business is what drives the economy. I think we need to put some backing to small businesses to invest in that area, to then bring people, not only who live in the area, but people who want to come in and visit the area. So far, with the Norton Pier ready, and the events that have gone on there, has brought many people out of state, other cities and towns. It's great to see, and we need to continue on that momentum in the years to head.
Thank you. Mr. Camara.
Yeah, I put a resolution together to bring down people from the state, Mr. Viola, people from the mayor's office, to discuss how that property is going to get divided up. Because right now, we're talking about the infrastructure, we're talking about everything putting in place, getting it all ready, and in a year and a half from now, we're going to be looking to begin to sell those parcels. Who are we selling them to? And who's going to have the right to develop it? And who's going to control it? So the state and different people are now jockeying, I guess, for position to see who's going to get the bigger bite of the apple. I think we should go out and advertise this nationwide, because it is pristine property, and there's a lot of potential there. So I'm not sure exactly how it's going to get divvied up. We had them before the council once, I'm going to bring them back before the council again, to say, "What are we doing so far?" There were things that we were working on, there was legislation that was being filed. Whether that has been supported and not supported, we don't know yet, but there's a tremendous, a lot of potential there, and I don't see, I don't want it to go to waste. I do believe we should have some housing, some small shops, some businesses, restaurants. I think it's a place that people should want to go to and be able to enjoy that area, and not just have it all one big housing complex throughout the entire parcel. So if you have housing up above, and shops and restaurants below the buildings, then that's a possibility. But I think it's enormous amount of potential there, and I think we need to know exactly how, and who's going to get a chance to divvy up the property, and who's going to get a chance to build there, buy there, and do all that stuff.
Thank you.
So I put it together before, and we'll do it again to figure it all out.
Ms. Dionne.
So, at the moment, the way it stands, the RDA and the state are both involved. At this present time, they're partners. Representative Viola filed a bill, hoping to put it all in the hands of the RDA. The state wants to be a stakeholder. The state has, up until now, invested hundreds of millions of dollars into what's happened. They've done all the, all the roadwork, they've done everything. So, moving forward, we only have one shot at getting this right. One shot to get this right. One shot to get this right. I think it should be mixed news, should be housing, everything that everybody said. I agree with that. But I think we need to bring in some entertainment venues as well. You know, everybody leaves Fall River, goes to Providence, Boston, down the Cape for entertainment, whether it be theater or whatever the case may be. I think we, I think we need to have some entertainment development as well. But I also feel that anybody who does develop the property down there, number one, we have national attention. National people are looking at that property, whether people realize it or not. With that, I don't think we should offer tiffs or ties. It's that popular, it's such pristine property. Bring your money, develop the property. But I think the developers should also have a stake in it. And what I mean by that is, in terms of aesthetics, in terms, they should, they should have to invest in that landscaping and be responsible to take care of it.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Thanks for the question. I agree with the counselor, Reposo, about follow the master plan. I think too, it's already, right now, it's already a joy to go down there. It's beautiful during the summer, it's fantastic. Wintertime is nice down there too, but obviously, summer is the way you want, where you want the business to get down to that waterfront. And I do, it is the RDA and the state, and Counselor President Camara was, did the right thing in bringing those parties down to have those meetings and finance. And when they were down here, they seemed like they were, you know, ready to work together. And I'm very confident that they will. I personally would like, and what the state has done so far has been incredible with the waterfront, with the down, with the Route 79 project. I do, I think it would be, we would be better off with the RDA in control of that, but with also the state assisting as well. I just want us to be in control of it. I'm not saying the state can have, can help out, but I think we, I think we know what's right for the, for that waterfront. And I think, like Counselor Dion said, I want the best of both worlds down there. I want entertainment, restaurants, and housing as well, but I want more of the entertainment aspect of it. So I think that we could be bigger than Newport, bigger than most of the
Thank you.
the eastern shore waterfunds that we, that are presently there. Thank you.
Mr. Mellum?
Well, I was, I went to get the master plan, because I think it's a piece of art. We have an opportunity to have what I think will be the best-looking waterfront in the state of Massachusetts. And that's incredible for a city that has gone through, we have gone through. It's amazing, but it's not going to be easy. The state must allow the visual authority to take over, to work with city officials, to make sure that what it is here in a plan is actually done. A combination of housing, restaurants, and certainly entertainment. Does the waterfront look good? It could be better. It's a nice place to walk, there's nothing else there. And we need a lot more, especially entertainment. Because there's nothing worse than to see our youth leave the city every day or every weekend, to go have fun someplace else when they could have it right here. And this calls for it, and I hope that we all work together, make sure this goes through. And the state owes us that much. Because if it went down as bad as it was, it was also the state's fault. So now, they should give it to us, let RDA and the city officials make progress and take care of it. It's going to take a while, probably as much as 10 years, but I think eventually, we'll have the best waterfront in the state of Massachusetts.
Thank you. Mr. Peckham?
So, I pray that they stick to the master plan or something similar to that. Out of the 6,652 multifamily units that I mentioned earlier through the MBTA Act, 40% of those have to be within a half a mile of the train. So my fear is, is that land is going to get filled with apartments. The city doesn't need that. The city needs jobs, it needs revenue, it needs rec for the children. I'm constantly hearing that we have nowhere for the kids to go, nowhere for the kids to go and entertain themselves. That's what that space should be dedicated to. I'll be honest, I, and I kind of agree with the housing down there, but if I had to vote on it, I'd be a no. I would not like to see any housing. They were popping up housing everywhere. That should be a dedicated space to recreation, entertainment, again, revenue-generating attractions. Something that takes the burden of the tax hikes every year off of the taxpayer. I think our water percentage fees went up by 24%. What happens when our budget goes up to $517 million next year? We're just going to keep going to the taxpayer, and we're not, we always put the cart before the horse. We build all this housing in the city, but we don't provide the jobs, the revenue, or anything alike, for the people to be able to afford those things. We have the opportunity down there to bring in revenue. And like several of the people at this table have said, it's probably the most attractive waterfront, one of them on the East Coast. We have the ability to bring people to it, to spend their money, and to bring money to the city of Fall River, and I think that's what we should do. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Martin is next with our next question, to be answered first by Louis Mellum.
Fall River voters showed a measurable shift toward Republican values in 2024. How would your voting record reflect this shift in policies such as taxes, community safety, and immigration?
Well, it's pretty close to the same. As far as voting mostly Republican, there's a reason. There's several reasons. The major reason being, we went from, in five years, from 200 and some million dollars to $500 million, double the budget of this city, which we can't afford. Now, do you know anybody that has a salary doubled in five years? I don't know anybody. So something doesn't make sense. You know, this, the budget process in this city has to be looked at. You know, the council sits there and votes yes or no. They can reduce it, they cannot increase it, but you need to get involved from day one with the department heads. I have a human resources background, and I serious believe that we need the best of the best, as long as we can afford it. And we can. If we have a budget of 500 and some million dollars, we can afford it, but we don't have the best of the best. And we need to have it, whether it's from within or from the outside. And you may ask questions related to that later on, and the answer is the same. We need to get the best of the best, regardless where they come from, as long as we can afford.
Thank you. Mr. Peckham?
Thank you for the question. I'm a Republican, and I would consider myself a constitutional conservative. I believe in smaller government, common sense decision-making. Like Mr. Mellum said, the budget has skyrocketed astronomically. I think we need to make the government smaller. The smaller the government, the less people you're paying, the smaller your budget is. And to touch upon the migrant issue, I am empathetic to their situation, but I'm more empathetic to the American people's situation. And currently, in the city of Fall River, I can tell you, it doesn't matter if you're pro-migrant, anti-migrant, you better be pro-pocketbook. I FOIA requested the city of Fall River recently, and asked for the amount of migrants that have been housed within the city of Fall River over the last four or five years. I figured out the date was on the FOIA. And I had the city of Fall River reach back out to me and say, we don't know. So I said, well, who knows? And they said, call HUD. So I sent a FOIA request to HUD. They wouldn't even put it in writing. They called me directly and said, Chris, we don't know. And they said, well, how do you not know? You've housed the people in the city of Fall River. And they said, well, they came through the same home-based Section 8 program as every other person on the list, and they were just placed. Now, I have a problem with that. We have people, we brought up the homeless, they're sleeping in tents. We had our citizens to take care of first. I always bring this up, if you and your wife, or you and your husband had a child, and you couldn't afford that child, would you go out and adopt another child, and bring them into your household if you were in economic turmoil? No.
Thank you.
But we do, and it doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. Mr. Reposo?
I think the shift indicates that we need to be a little more fiscally conservative when it comes to budget planning, and how money is spent in the city. I think one of the things, obviously, as a council, we have that ability to reduce the budget, but we also need to have a stronger partnership with the administration. Because some of those things that are agreed upon and that are presented to us, unfortunately, our hands become tied. So we need to have a better relationship, whoever the mayor is in the next two years, to sit at the table and say, listen, we need to be more fiscally prudent in what we're doing. But on top of that, to Mr. Mellum's point, and I agree, investing in strong leadership within our city government to then have some proactive movement, to kind of revision what we're doing. Just doing, recycling the same ideas and doing the same things over and over again is only going to cost us more money in the end. So we need to build that partnership, be a little more fiscally responsible. But when it comes to planning, we talked about this the other night, a true capital plan that invests in our city going forward, that reimagines what we have here. Because then, if we do that, and be proactive and work together, I think ultimately, it benefits everybody. And I think more people will be satisfied, because they'll see more with their tax dollars that they're investing into the city.
Thank you. Mr. Camara?
Thank you. Before I answer this question, I just want to get back to the waterfront for one quick thing. One thing that we failed to mention is that the federal government is also involved in the divvying up of that property, because they own a lot of property down there as well, and they want to have a piece of the pie in there as well. And as far as the entertainment goes, I don't know. There are a lot of people that I know go to the Narrows for entertainment. So we do have good waterfront entertainment right now. Like to expand upon that, that's great. But I don't want anyone to think that there is no entertainment in Fall River, and we have to leave our city. We have excellent entertainment there, and the Narrows does a phenomenal job. As far as the budget going up from 200,000 to 400,000, get back to the question, school department budget alone in four years increased $100 million. School department alone. The state has more money for school department and the things they're putting in. We don't know how to spend that money in Fall River. School department is struggling now. What can they do with all this? What programs can we implement? Who can we hire? They're looking to hire teachers, and they can't get people to fill these positions. Our fixed costs continue to go up. Healthcare, union contracts, all of those things are not going to go away. That's why the budgets increase year after year. We on the council try to do the best we can to make the best use of that money. We're building new schools. And I've been building new schools since I first day on this council, when we started rebuilding all of these schools at 90% reimbursements. And I'm glad that most of our schools right now are state-of-the-art, brand-new schools, and most of those that we've already paid off. Look at what's going on right now with Dufy High School, that school right there, and look at Diamond. I mean, no other community has invested in much in its schools and education
Thank you.
as Fall River has in quite some time.
Thank you.
And I just want to say one thing about the Republican Democratic Party. This is not the Democratic Party of JFK, it's not the Republican Party of
Thank you.
Ronald Reagan. Thank you.
Ms. Dion?
Yes, I'm going to go back to the last question just for one second as well. I don't want anybody to think that, that, at least, I'll speak for myself. I'm saying anything negative about the Narrows.
It wasn't shocking.
I know that. No, no. But the point is, that the Narrows, yes, they do a phenomenal job. However, we have 90,000 people who live in the city, probably another 30,000 coming into the city. I don't think that many people can fit in the Narrows. I think there's room for expansion in entertainment, is my point. Now with that said, so, I am acutely aware of the people who can't afford the increases, can't afford taxes, the people on fixed incomes. I have always advocated for those people. We have people in City Hall who are living, who are being paid less than $40,000 a year, qualify for food stamps, and they qualify for fuel assistance. That's wrong. I have advocated for those people, time and time again. I think I was the only one this year who voted no for the budget. Why did I vote no for the budget? Because I felt the raises that were being given were extreme, that people who needed equity and fairness didn't get it. I made a few motions to reduce some items. It didn't, the support wasn't there, it didn't happen. So, in good conscience, I couldn't vote yes. And I still don't believe that it's a balanced budget. I still believe we're about $2 million shy in healthcare. So, for those reasons, I couldn't support the budget.
Thank you.
I didn't support the water rate increases.
Thank you.
And I didn't last year either.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Keith. I'd like to go back to the very first question of the night. No, just kidding. But what I do want to talk about is Pam's question about how it was reflective, Pam, of the vote that was taking place in the last presidential election.
Read it again?
Yeah, I kind of lost a little.
Fall River voters showed a measurable, measurable shift toward Republican values in 2024.
Yeah.
So how will your voting record reflect this shift in policies like taxes, community safety, and immigration?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that we've got to be, obviously, we've got to look out a lot for the taxpayers of this city. And I think I do that. I think also too, I think it's incumbent upon us to, you know, make sure that when we hear about the immigration and migrants, I remember myself and Brad Kilby filed a resolution, because we heard some very strong rumors from the governor, that they were, she, she, I think they'd taken over some athletic facility in Roxbury, and provided that to the migrants, and kicked out some folks and youth in the Boston area. And I, and we did hear that that was strongly going to be recommended for somewhere in the South Coast. We put a resolution together, because we did not want that to happen in Fall River. We, look, just as Mr. Peckham said, I've got more compassion for those folks as well. But we need to, when something like that might, is coming to, possibly to Fall River, we need to hear more about that from the state. Because there's, we can't take more, more, any more people for housing
Thank you.
for that particular, for those migrants. We just need to pay more attention to those people that are living in Fall River.
Thank you. Michael Sylvia is next with our next question, and it will be directed first to Paul Hart.
Fall River has had five police chiefs in the past 10 years. Fall River Police Chief Kelly Fattado was approved for a one-year contract in May, and it appears to have become a civil service position. If elected, how would you like to see the next chief of police selection process work? For example, would you like, would you hire from within, or go outside of the city like New Bedford just did?
Yeah, I think the Bedford model was good. I think though, we, I think it's high time that the civil service comes into play for our, for police department, for the next chief. I think that's the best, fairest way to go. I was one of a few people that supported Chief Fattado on the council. I thought she would do a good job, and she is doing a very good job right now. I'm chairman of the Public Safety Committee. I work with her and the Chief Bacon, and also Chief of EMS, really well together. We have them in for quarterly meetings. I think that what Chief Fattado has done with morale of the police department right now is good. There's issues though, still, within the department, and I think Chief Fattado is working on that. And I have faith in her that she will continue to straightening that issue out. But I think the civil service is the way to go.
Thank you. Mr. Mellum?
Well, first of all, I think Chief Fattado does a great job. She's got a lot of experience. Yeah, she may not have a college degree, but that's not that important when you have 30-some years' experience, and you've done a good job at just about every position you've had. As far as replacing with the new chief of police, is it going to be civil service or not? It doesn't matter to me. Again, my human resources instinct comes up and says, get the best from whatever, from within or from outside, as long as he or she is qualified, and we can afford it. That should always be the case for any position, especially positions that the city pays for.
Thank you. Mr. Peckham?
It's a great question. As, when I was a city councilor in 2021, I'm the one that filed the original resolution to bring the police chief back to civil service, because I didn't like the politics in policing. If we were to go to another chief right now with this current administration, I would highly suggest that it was civil service, and take the nepotism and, how do I word this without being too rude? There was such a buffer put up between the city council and the police chief while I was a city council, that we were unable to even talk to the gentleman, or both chiefs at the time, because they were afraid to talk to the city council and give us information due to the mayor. Until we get a different administration, that I would feel comfortable enough to make that appointment outside of the city, I would highly suggest that we stay civil service. I think Chief Fattado is doing a great job.[1684.80] She has those new teams that she's created, they're taking drugs, guns off the street. The only problem with that is when we manned those positions, we took all the cops off the street. So we only have 10 cops on the street, no walking beats. Where you go back to 1985, we had 30 police officers on the city streets. Five walking beaks, 1A, 5A, 3A, we don't have that anymore. And our population has gone up drastically. The other day, for instance, we had an armed robbery at Market Basket. Car 1 had to respond. So we need a chief in there, and Car 1's the Far North End. We need a chief in there that's able to make decisions without, without being in fear of losing their job. So yes, under this current administration, I would not go with an appointment. I would definitely go to civil service. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reposo.
I think it's critical to have a fair and transparent process. To Mr. Mellon's point, and it's hugely important, that we want to look for the best of the best, qualified, experienced, education, a little bit of both, but also somebody who has a vested interest in our community. So I would look at first from within, what we have locally here, and then if we have to expand that reach, so be it. I will say, I'm very happy with Chief Fattado, the work she has done, the team she's put together, the work on the ground, but not just her, her team and the entire police department working on the ground to clean up things that are going on. I appreciate, I've talked to a lot of different police officers across the time Chief Fattado's been chief. They've been very happy with what's been going on. But again, we are going to look to the future in a very short period of time. Having somebody qualified who has a vested interest in our community is key to who's going to be our next leader as far as our police department is concerned.
Thank you. Mr. Kamara.
Great question. We've almost had as many mayors in that short timeframe as well, chiefs, just so you'll know. So I want the best person for the job, period. I support the chief, I support the police department 100%. If we don't have a safe city, we don't have a city. City needs to be safe, and the councillors, I've always supported, the fire department, public safety, the police department. Whether it's civil service or contract, it really doesn't matter to me, honestly. I will tell you this, back in 2008, 2009, the Fall River Fire Department took a vote of no confidence in their civil service chosen chief. He was civil service chosen, come up through the ranks, they took a vote of no confidence in that chief. And you know what they said? He's too political? He does whatever the mayor tells him to do, he doesn't support the fire department. This was not a contracted chief in the fire department. Mayor Correa, Bob Correa came in and wanted to change that from civil service to contract. We did it, and then we reversed it because another mayor came in and took a contract position, gave it to a lieutenant, which was well below the people that qualified ahead of him. So it became very political back then, and now the conversation came back to, let's go back to civil service. So whether you have a civil service chief or whether you have a contracted chief, I want the best person for the job. I want to go, whether it's inside or outside, whether we put a national search out or anyone out there, like New Bedford had 22 candidates for it, we interviewed three people. So I wanted to see the best person possible for that job, and whether they're in the department now or whether they're not in the department now.
Thank you. Ms. Deion.
Thank you. So I've always been an advocate for a process. I've always wanted a process, and I can go back five chiefs. And I can tell you that I had a conversation with the mayor on a couple of occasions. I initially advocated for what they call a 700-hour chief. You have somebody who was a high-ranking official in the state police who's retired, a former chief from a police department. They come in, they work for 700 hours, they evaluate your department. When they're done, they tell you your strengths, your weaknesses. If you have somebody in your department they feel is the person who should be running that department, or if you don't have that person, it should go out of the department. That was what I would advocate for. Somebody who is looking at it from purely a, with no preconceptions, not connected to anybody in the city. So that's what I, would be my ideal way to choose a chief. But obviously, that's not going to happen. New Bedford, I think their process, their process was great. I could, that process would be second in my book. I would love to have that process, but it became apparent that wasn't going to happen either. So that's where we came to civil service. I voted yes. It's now up, it's been brought to Boston for them to allow us to go back to civil service. The initial vote was already taken in the House. It's a process. Is it the best? I don't think so, but it's a process.
Thank you. All right, our next question will be asked by Dan Maduris again of the Herald News. And every candidate has had the opportunity to answer a question once, so their names are back in the cup. And the candidate to receive this question first will be Joe Kamara.
So we often hear about the revitalization of the Flint, and it needs it. But what other neighborhoods do you think are most in need of help, and how can the council help?
So we made some changes in the facade in the Flint. I know that we've tried to put some programs together to help people fix the outside of their place. Recently, I got a phone call from someone who's a businessperson in Flint. She said, you know, I did the outside of my building myself without the city's help. I was wondering if maybe the city could help me with some of the renovations on the inside of the building. So I contacted the city, had someone go down there, and they're working on it. They're looking to put maybe put new carpet in the place, do something different. Because if you want to revitalize the Flint, you just can't make it pretty on the outside and then have it horrendous on the inside. And if someone's spending their money to build up their business on the outside, and there's grants to help them along the way with that, but yet they don't get to recoup anything on the inside, maybe we should mix it up and help businesses overall, period, whether it's inside or outside. The problem with the Flint, the problem with all the other neighborhoods like that, is you pick up your phone, you press a couple of buttons, and it's at your door the next day. So Amazon, all these big box stores, everything that's going on now, it's not like it was when we were growing up, where you could go to the stores. I used to go downtown, my mother would take me to buy school uniforms when we were going to school. That doesn't happen anymore now, but she'll just, I'll tell my wife, you know, I'm getting low on this, and she hits the button a couple of times on the phone, next thing you know, it's at the door. And I'm like, wow, this is like, it's just, it's a different time. Places like the Flint, it's beautiful. I, my, I lived, I grew up near the Flint, grew up out on Compton Street. We ride my bike through Flint all the time. Used to go to Salvos potato chips, used to go all over the place. It's not the same anymore, it's different. It's too easy, too convenient for people to just put their orders online, right from their house. If they have to storm out and you need to go shopping, you're not going to do it. You can do, we've done groceries online.
Thank you.
They drop it off at your house. It's just a different time, and those businesses down there, it's different.
Ms. Deion.
Yeah, it's very unfortunate that as time has gone by, it's, the Flint was full of businesses. Well, there were so many businesses years back, and it was vibrant. And one by one, those businesses fell. And you can't have those businesses unless you have the population with the expendable income to keep them going. Fortunately, we still have a number of the mom and pop shops, they've managed to survive. But the Flint, South Main Street, many, many years ago, you can look, there's a whole story on the granite block. Downtown was booming, it was incredible. It all burnt down in a fire, and since then, people have wavered. They try to bring stuff in and it just doesn't work. We just don't have, you know, at a $31,000 a year income level in the city of Fall River, median income level, that's not a lot of expendable money. You know, people are concentrating on their groceries and their basic needs. I don't know the answer to how we can revitalize. Hopefully, maybe with this waterfront, it's going to move into other neighborhoods and we'll be able to bring everything back. But I don't have, I don't have the answer to it.
Mr. Hart.
Thank you for the question. I agree with Council President Kamara and Council Deion. Just times have changed. I was always a frequent visitor to the Flint, whether it was the Maki Restaurant or other shops down there. I still go to Gilbert's Jewelers, they're very good. They're very, very good small business, family-owned. But I think, you know, you mentioned other neighborhoods throughout the city as well. And I think what's really an important piece to the waterfront is the downtown. I know the downtown's doing okay, but it could be doing a lot better. And I think if we can maybe work on the downtown more, not ignoring any of the other neighborhoods throughout the city, but I think the downtown's very important, you know, conduit to the waterfront. So that's kind of where I would put some of my work with the next administration on that in the council, if I'm fortunate enough to be reelected.
Thank you. Mr. Mellon.
Yes, times have changed, but they have changed in some parts of the city, some parts they have not. Infrastructure is a problem in this city. The Flint is a good example, but it's not the only one. It seems to me that everything south of Bedford Street is not the same as between Bedford and President. And between President and Bedford is not the same as north of President Avenue. I don't think that's an accident. I think that's lack of planning. The Flint in specific has been neglected for many years throughout several administrations. Let's not just blame the time, let's blame some people who were in charge that shouldn't have been in charge, that didn't do a good job. And now we look at the Flint and say, well, yeah, times have changed. Yes, times have changed, but in some places, they have changed for the better, even within our own city. So let's look at ourselves first and then blame the times for it. Again, it's a matter of competencies. We need competent people running this city, and I'm not just talking about one individual, I'm talking about everyone involved in government, which hasn't taken place. You know, I see a city council that sits there and votes yes, no. And I'm not here to talk anything bad about city councillors or any other official that's elected. They do their best, but I also believe in term limits.
Thank you.
After a certain time, you need to go, let someone else do it.
Thank you. Mr. Peckham.
So I think when I was a councillor, I looked at the Flint. I went down there and I spoken to a gentleman that wanted to buy a couple of the buildings there, and his proposal was ultimately shot down. A lot of the issues there, from to my understanding, are ADA compliant issues. I think if the city were to offer some type of initiative to buy them, and I'm not well-versed on the ADA compliance, American with Disability Act compliance, but there could be an avenue to explore there to kind of spruce up the Flint neighborhood. I agree and disagree with Council Hart, where I agree that the downtown area is a, that's where our attention should be. Again, I keep mentioning revenue generating businesses. I want to mention and bring up the city of Totten. If anybody's been to the city of Totten, their downtown at the Green looks just like the city of Fall River. If I'm elected, I am going to personally reach out to Shawna O'Connell and see what her economic development plan was for their downtown section, because it is vibrant. There's people everywhere, every storefront is full, there's restaurants. And their city's not much, rather than having, other than having a few less people, it's pretty much the same type of city. How are they able to do it and we're not? And where I disagree with Council Hart was only the point that I don't think the downtown area is doing okay. I think it's awful, and it really needs, it needs a major facelift, and again, to bring in that revenue. So our taxpayers stop footing the bill for everything that the city has to take care of. We bring in that revenue, that's more money for us to spend.
Thank you. Mr. Reposo.
So I bring a unique perspective because I've spent the past 12 years working in the Flint. I spend more time in the Flint than I do in my own house. So, and I've watched over the past 12 years, the Flint and how it's changed and how it's good and bad. The reality is, the Flint neighborhood and the community that exists in the Flint neighborhood is hugely invested in the future, and they want to see the Flint be vibrant. But there's two things that bother me about it. One is the aging infrastructure. We need to invest to let people get into the Flint before we even talk about investing in the Flint. And then once we get past that, we need to stop squeezing business owners. It's hard to do business in this city. We need to have a process that's much easier and streamlined for people to work and start small businesses in the Flint. If you look at the Flint, and a few of us have already mentioned some of those businesses that have been there for many years and continue to thrive, we need to make life easier for them to then invest their money and be successful in the Flint. And then that will just continue and domino in a positive way. And again, if we don't invest in that infrastructure that exists there, we're never going to get people to continue. There's so many great elements of the Flint that can be taken advantage of, and we can continue to move forward. To the question though, however, other than the Flint, parts of the South End and the downtown, simple.
Thank you. Pam Martin is back up for our next question, and will be answered first in this round by Christopher Peckham.
So about three years ago, to Great Fan Fair, Viva Fall River opened a small arts center with ARPA funds and paid employees. We all just talked about the need for entertainment and arts. Well, Viva did offer small, but a location for entertainment. It also offered art lessons for young people and things to do. Viva moved right to downtown, still failed, it just recently closed. Why? What happened?
Did you say it was ARPA-funded?
It was ARPA-funded and paid staff.
Okay. Well, one-time money to supply any type of business is a bad idea. If they don't have the revenue to keep their business open after going through that ARPA money, then any business is going to struggle. I had an art business myself. I understand the importance of art in the city. I don't think that that location was the best location for that business. Bringing in little kids and the traffic over there is, it's really bad. I, again, I would have to just go back to the ARPA money. I sat on the ARPA committee and I was a strong proponent to spend that money wisely, such as in the water department, the police department, and infrastructure. I don't think it should have gone to art businesses, to be honest with you, because again, it's one-time money. Yeah, that's all I have for you, Pam.
Thank you. Mr. Reposo.
You know, I think just basing the success of Viva Forward just on that storefront misses the mark. You know, I took a vested interest in Viva Fall River and the people that were involved in it, and have been to too many events in the city where Viva and other organizations came together to run successful art, culture, tourism events, all these different things. Again, you have to be present to know what's going on, and that's one of the biggest problems, is that people are not present when they should be. And I pride myself in being visible and being there for these things. And the partnerships among, it was not just one person, it was many people coming together to make things happen. And people showed up, people were entertained, people were spending money. It's, I think it's unfair criticism, yeah, the storefront closed, because again, it was with one-time money, ARPA money. But the work that was done, the foundation that was set, and to be honest, the foundation to continue to be set, will be good for the city. The problem is, the administration needs to invest in it. One-time money will not solve it, we need to have a long-term plan to invest. Because if we do not invest, we're back to square one five years from now, and we've done nothing. Invest, reinvent, and move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Kamara.
Yeah, they did do a good job, and other people helped along the way, and it's really tough. I think the problem we have is that we keep going back and forth. Do we want a tourism director for our city to replace something like that? Or do we want to have private people push the arts in our city? So it's not just about the arts, it's about the entire culture of bringing people from outside to enjoy all of the good things that we have. We have concerts along the waterfront, we have the Narrows, like I said earlier. There's so many different things going on that it's tough for one time money to be put into an institution. It's okay, here, make this work for you. Because they did do a lot of promotions, they did do a lot of advertising, they do a lot of functions, they had help from a lot of different people, but there were other people doing similar things. So it gets very, very difficult. It has to be coordinated, I think the city should play a bigger role. And I've never been a 100% fan of a tourism director, but maybe it's time we should take another look at that and say, hey, maybe the tourism should lead the charge and help organizations like that thrive and succeed. And that's a tough, tough industry. The arts is really, really, what Viva was really, give them a lot of credit. It's a tough, tough thing to do, to promote it, have people come from outside into our city. It's not easy, it's a tough business.
Thank you. Ms. Deion.
So Viva Fall River was given base, well, I should say, it wasn't just Viva, but the Commerce, three-quarters of a million dollars. A lot of people feel that with some of the things that they did, they targeted a small number of businesses and consistently brought people to those businesses, that it wasn't citywide enough. We have people in this city who have been promoting arts, culture, and events for years without one penny of funding. They've been successful, and they're still doing it. And their events sell out every time they have an event, and they think outside of the box, and they do a phenomenal job with not one penny. To me, someone who was given the opportunity with ARPA funding to have that much money and have a salary paid, et cetera, et cetera, somehow it should have been sustainable when the money was gone. If you were effectively doing what you should have been doing. Because if these people for 20 years have been able to do it without a penny, then a plan should have been able to be put in place to make it sustainable so that it was still here.
Mr. Hart.
Thanks for the question. Yeah, Viva Fall River was fantastic, they did a fabulous, fabulous job here. And I know Council President just mentioned the tourism director. That is one thing that I will advocate 1,000% for, and I will push the administration to do, is to hire a tourism director, especially with the waterfront that we have in the future. We need every bit of opportunity we can get, and bringing in a person who is inexperienced in the tourism industry will only benefit our city, so I'm 100% for that.
Thank you. Mr. Hart. I'm sorry, Mr. Mellon.
Yeah. Yeah, it's my heart. Well, first of all, I don't think the business plan was done right. You know, when you receive, I think it was three-quarters of a million dollars of public money, you have to design your plan in a way so that when that money is gone, you're self-supporting yourself. And I don't think that was done. But I want to agree with Council Kamara in terms of, and actually, all three of them, in terms of the tourist director, we need one. Most cities have. Especially when we're talking about developing the waterfront with over a billion dollars with the infrastructure, we need that kind of a guy or gal to take over. There's a lot of things to do in Fall River that people are not aware of. You know, early today, we spoke about the theater down in waterfront. I know it's there, but half of Fall River doesn't know it's there. And that's when a director, tourist director comes in and formalizes ways of explaining and showing people what to do, and bringing people from the outside as well. We definitely need someone like that. That's money well spent.
Thank you. Michael Sylvia with our next question, and it will be directed to Paul Hart.
Risk of falling.
Risk of falling concrete, hollow sounding beams, signs of significant deterioration of ramp walls, inadequate load transfer. Those are just some of the determinations found in the structural assessment conducted by the engineering company to completely renovate the two city-owned parking garages on Pearl and Third Street. Many of us have seen those Jenga towers that are supporting the infrastructure. The estimated cost is $13 million to completely repair the two garages. What's the plan for those garages?
Yeah, we've had discussions about that, about the, those two particular garages. And they are in bad shape. There's no question about it. And I know that the city officials have done their best. They've invested in it, not obviously close to even enough. I'd be, I'll tell you, right, I'd be in favor of selling them to a private, to a private ownership. Let them rehab everything. Let them put the money into it. A lot of gateway cities of our size do the same thing. And I just would rather see that out of our hands. And I'd rather have private ownership go in there, do it the right way and just let them handle it. Put a RFP out. But I don't think the city right now should be in charge of those particular projects. Because in the past, we haven't been able to get it to 100%. And I think by selling it, a private owner will do that. And it will be a lot safer for the community and it'll be a lot better for people visiting the city to park there.
Thank you. Mr. Mellum.
I agree. We should sell it. It's a waste of money. We're not going to do anything. We have so much to do in infrastructure in this city. We're not going to have money to fix it. We might as well just get rid of, sell them to somebody who can repair and make it accessible to people, especially those who visit downtown. It's that simple. Just get rid of it. Sell it.
Thank you. Mr. Peckham.
Well, this isn't a new issue. When I was campaigning for my first time in 2019, I was sitting in council chambers and they were discussing it with Glenn Hathaway then. The problem here is kicking the can down the road. If, and $13 million, I would hope we'd get somebody else to go in there and give us a bid on that project. I think that's a little high. I would be against selling them. I keep talking about bringing in revenue and bringing money into the city. If we had two parking garages that people were using and spending their money in, it's still money coming into the city. I just think that $13 million, I'm no contractor, but it seems kind of high to me. I don't know whose friends getting that job. I would have other people come in and give us a bid on the rehab of that. And the Jenga blocks are awful. I don't even know how people are able to even walk by it, never mind park in it. But again, this is the proverbial kicking the can down the road. I think if we fix them and then come up with a plan to upkeep them, like everything else in the city, we don't come up with that and things fall apart. And 10 years from now, we're fixing something we were talking about in 2015. We need to come up with a plan with things that we put money into, up-kept and taking care of. And we wouldn't be discussing things like this. But yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reposo.
Yeah, I would be against at this moment, selling them. I think we should reinvest the revenue we make into the parking garages. Simple. I mean, I think the problem is, is that we've had revenue and it's proven, it's in the budget, that we have raised revenue through the garages. But what are we doing with the money to reinvest and fix them? The reality is, the longer we wait to fix them, the more deteriorating they can become. And at some point, we're going to lose them and lose the revenue that we're getting from them. And then what? How are we going to make up that $1.2 million or so that's being, that's being generated from them? So reinvest the money, start with a plan, get moving on it. We're waiting. The time is ticking on it. And I think we have a golden opportunity to do it. And at the end of the day, if we can't handle it, then yeah, the last option you have is to load it off to somebody who can do it. But really, the investment of the revenue that we generate from them should be priority number one to get those garages up to speed.
Thank you. Mr. Camaro.
So the city had control over the parking garages. We're doing a good job of maintaining it. Turned it over to the redevelopment authority. Redevelopment authority thought, you know what? We're going to make this work and make this plan. Turns out, turns out that they didn't, weren't successful at it either. They had a manager there, they had people there doing stuff. What did they decide to do? Let's give it back to the city. Put it back in the city. So now it's back in us. They didn't spend a lot of money fixing any of that stuff up. So now we have to do it. And I agree, we should keep them. I don't think we should sell them because there's a generating, a profit generator there. What we can do is, we're getting bids out now. We've had them come before us. We put a resolution into what the status is. They're probably going to come before us in the next couple of meetings. They're getting some bids done. They're getting some quotes done. I know the numbers that they've given so far were kind of high. So we're looking at that now. But I think the intention is not to sell them. Keep them, fix them up, get them where they should be so we can have the third floor up there working. Because right now, it's not even safe to go up the ramp that way. So we're not getting full use out of it. And once we make those investments and fix it up, we'll be able to generate more revenue. And people down there rely on that. So I don't want to turn it over to a private person, sell them and then lose total control and who knows what's going to happen. Look what happened to the rents in our city. Those parking garages at a decent rate, those people that have parking there all day long and live in those downtown, they count on that garage to stay similar to what they're paying now. And we can control that. So I say keep them.
Thank you. Ms. Dionne.
So this is going to be a bit redundant, however. The RDA transferred those garages to the city in 2018, seven years ago. So these garages have been in the possession of the city for seven years. And the city did nothing. What happened over seven years? They deteriorated more and more and more. So they were in better shape when they received them. It would have been less expensive to repair them. And we probably could have been generating revenue for the last three years. We also had ARPA funding that came in, I believe, 2021. Would have been ARPA money well spent if we had invested that money in the garages. And again, we would, we would, we would have had two, three years of already generating revenue for the city. Unfortunately, we're never proactive. We're always reactive, always put the cart before the horse and invest in things. I don't want to put it in a bad way, but sometimes we invest in feel-good things instead of things that are going to help the community, the city and revenue moving forward.
Right. Thank you. I don't think we have enough time for another round of questions. So we're going to go to the closing statements right now. You each have 90 seconds. And the first candidate to deliver their closing statement will be Andrew Reposo.
Excellent. Thank you to the panelists. Thank you to my fellow candidates here this evening. And thank you for FRG TV and FRC Media for the opportunity. I mean, I've been blessed to serve our community and I hope to continue to do so. And I hope I can earn your vote on November 4th. My desire to be on the council is to continue working with you, the citizens of Fall River, providing constituent services, continuing to speak with you at the different events that I see you at and be your voice and make things happen. I think sometimes, again, I mentioned it before, that we are elected officials. We're here to be your voice and we need to continue to do that. And honestly, speak a little louder sometimes for the issues that you're experiencing. If I'm fortunate to return to the council, I'll work with my public safety officials to continue to help our city be safe, work with whatever administration we have to advocate to keep our streets clean, keep that graffiti off those walls, but also to expand the reason why people come to Fall River, to invest, to visit, to enjoy themselves. In the end, we need to work together as a council, as an administration, to make things happen and have forward progress. So my role is to serve you and be here for you. And I ask humbly for your vote on November 4th to continue doing that work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Camaro.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith, for the invite. Thank you for what you do here for TV. And thank you, Mike, Pam and Dan, for the great questions you guys asked. Appreciate it. And I also want to thank the people of Fall River for putting their faith and trust in me and my ability to serve as a city councillor throughout my entire tenure. This is a job that I take very seriously. The votes that we take impact everyone in this community. And it's something that it's no laughing matter, but it's something that we go to, every other week practically, we go to our meetings, we look at the agenda, study it carefully and try to make the best decisions I can make on behalf of our taxpayers. I pride myself on constituent service, on doing what's right for the city, what I believe is right for the city. At the end of the day, when I leave the council meetings, I think that I put the most in as I could. I try to put my opinion in when I think it matters. I try to research everything as much as possible. But at the end of the day, what do we do? We serve the public. I try to help as many people as possible with their needs. A lot of people come to us because they don't know where to turn to get certain guidance and certain needs. And I pride myself on getting back to them and helping them as much as possible. And also, I mean, it's just, it's a job that requires a lot of time, commitment and energy and effort. I've put a lot of that into it. I'm a lifelong resident of City of Fall River. People know who I am. They know what they get when they, when they support me. And on November 4th, I ask for their continued support. I really love the job I do. I think I do a decent job and I appreciate one of your nine votes on November 4th. Thank you very much. I am number 14 on the ballot, last person on the ballot.
Thank you. Ms. Dionne.
It, I don't even know how to express how grateful I am that I've had the opportunity to do this. I can say that I have always, always advocated for the people and for this city. If, you know, you take thousands of votes and very often you get chopped up for one vote people don't like. And I say to people, well, if I've taken thousands of votes and you, and there's less than five that you don't like, I think I've done a good job. I advocate for the people in City Hall who aren't earning a fair wage. I think if you look at my track record and you look at my voting record, I think people are happy with it. I do it with a good heart. I do it because I, and I vote the way I vote because I believe I'm doing what's best for the city. I can say that I honestly can every night put my head on the pillow very peacefully because I believe I have done it honorably, honestly, and I have demanded good government in return. And with that, I humbly ask that the voters give me one more shot. I'll be number eight on the ballot this year. I'm very happy about that because I've never been higher than 13. So I was very excited this year when I made it, came in at number eight. So thank you very much. Thank you to everybody that put this together.
Thank you.
You put in a lot of time. And thank you to the people who watched and care enough to listen to us.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Keith. And thank you again to FRC Media, Herald News, FRG TV and Fall River Reporter. I just wanted to tell everybody out there that are watching and to the citizens of Fall River that I would appreciate one of your votes on November 4th. I've been a public servant for the past 18 years, four terms on the school committee. And this is, I believe, my fourth term on the city council. I come from a great family. My father and mother, John Jackhart and Joan Hart. I had six brothers and sisters. I'm raising, I'm a single father, raising two wonderful boys who I'm blessed to have in my life. One's a college student at Bridgewater State, taking up history and secondary ed. And my son, Matt, is a junior at Diamond in the carpentry shop, playing basketball, football on track. I've been blessed by being a father. I've learned a lot being a father. And I think I've learned, most importantly, constituent service and making what I think is the right vote and being glad, like as Michelle would say, going home and being able to sleep. And I have no problem doing that. I've been blessed to be your city councillor and school committee man. I want to keep continuing to do that, doing that. I'll continue to work very hard for all of you. And I again, ask you for your vote on November 4th. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Mellum.
We spoke a lot tonight about developing Fall River, about infrastructure, about garages that produce a million dollars, but the deterioration is worth $5 million? And that's good business? I don't think so. Safety is my number one priority. Without feeling safe in a city, nothing's going to get done. Fire department, police department and EMS should be fully staffed and fully financed every year. I don't understand why our water went up 24%. That's our number one asset in this city is water, more than any city around here. But yet went up 24%. Something is not right with this budget. And I don't think the city council knows what's going on with the budget. They simply approve or disapprove. You need to get involved right from the beginning. It doesn't make sense that our budget doubled in the last five or six years. It's over a billion dollars now. And we're spending money, ARPA money, public money on things that we shouldn't and not spending where we should. In any event, my background is in human resources, 30 years of it. I believe that we always must hire the best and take politics out of it. Everywhere. November 4th is an important day. The future of Fall River is on the line.
Thank you.
I hope you give me one of your votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peckham.
I want to thank Keith, Mike, Pam and Dan for tonight. It was excellent. The first time I was elected, I wasn't afraid to use my voice. And I'm definitely not again. The, this city is, it holds a special place in my heart and that's why I'm back. I see a lot of the issues going on and I start yelling at the TV. We're watching city council meetings. And then I just said to myself one day, you gotta, you gotta go back because your voice here in the living room is falling on deaf ears. I did a lot of constituent services when I was a city councillor. I showed up to everything people called me to. COVID was a big thing. I was doing raffles for restaurants, donating money, buying gift cards and doing raffles with people online to keep them interested and also try to help the small businesses. This community means everything to me. In my place of work for 15, 16 years, I was a certified hostage negotiator through the FBI. And one of the main things we learned every time we went to a training was nobody's problem is too small. Never treat anybody as if their problem is too small. Never blow anybody off because you'll end up with a predicament. And I carried that right into politics. Anybody that would call me, no matter the issue, it was never too small to address. They're city residents and I was never afraid to address those topics. Address, one thing I was never afraid to address was the administration always held them accountable. No matter what the issue is, if I found that it wasn't in the benefit of the taxpayer and the residents of the city, I took it on and I addressed it without fear. That's what I'll bring back. If I'm elected again on November 4th, I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank the candidates and the panelists tonight for participating in tonight's forum. Special thanks to our FRC Media crew behind the scenes, Steve Rice, Michelle Dumas and Lucy Cabral. And also like to thank Bristol Community College for allowing us to use this facility to host our forums. You can watch a replay of this forum and find out more information about the candidates by visiting our special webpage, frmedia.org/election2025. On election night, November 4th, we'll be partnering with FRG TV to bring you election night results. One other reminder, coming up this Tuesday, October 21st at 6:30, we'll be hosting incumbent Mayor Paul Coogan and challenger Gabriel Boomer Amaral for a mayoral debate beginning at 6:30 PM. Thank you all for watching and have a good night.